Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We welcome everyone who's here tonight, a few diehards that come and see what we're doing. We note that we have six members of the council present. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight. With that, we have our opening ceremony next. We'll turn to Councilmember Lars Norfeld. Thank you, Mayor. Will everyone please join with me and stand at and recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to this, open to liberty and justice for all.
Then, next we have our minutes of September 25th. A motion from the council on the minutes. Move to approve the minutes of September 25th? Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of September 25th, please say aye. Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we have our public comment period. This is a generic time for anything that someone would like to speak to us about. I will mention that we do have two public hearings that are separate. So if you're here regarding the budget, we will do a separate comment period for that. That's our item seven on our agenda. Also on item seven, we have an application, ZT-32018, the Decker Lake Station overlay zone. Those two will be separate public hearings. So if you're here to speak to those, we will get to those shortly. Now, we'll do just the generic public comment. And I would mention, your comments are addressed to the mayor. It's not a debate. It's not a question and answer period. It's just time for you to present your information. The council may comment later, but typically not in great detail since we can't go very far on items that are not on our agenda by state law. So with that then, we have, two people have signed up for our general comment period. I believe it's Julie Jacks, or correct me if that's wrong when you come up and introduce yourself.
It's Julie Jacobs. That's okay. I haven't been here for several years.
Oh, okay.
I want to thank you for inviting me as a public resident here to speak this evening. The last time I was here was when it was a gassing shelter, and many residents in West Valley City were deeply concerned about the horrific method employed at this shelter. When the West Valley Shelter made the decision to move from a gassing shelter to a no-kill Q1 2013, it became a model that many Utah shelters and shelters in the Intermountain region chose to follow. It set the perfect example for shelters that no-kill is actually possible if city officials, the community, rescues throughout Utah, and shelter employees all work together for the common goal of no-kill. As part of that model, community cats were included in that no-kill statistic and still are today. Best Friends Animal Sanctuary worked closely to build upon and maintain the success of the TNR program at the shelter. Since that time, however, it seems that the practices of the West Valley City Shelter have changed implement whatever methods are absolutely necessary to maintain the no-kill numbers of the shelter. One of those methods is RTF, or return to field. Though I believe this practice originally had the best of intentions, removing community cats by whatever means is necessary in order to maintain the no-kill status, I believe is absolutely not the answer at this time. For example, and this is only one example in this method, if a non-community cat ends up at the shelter and is not microchipped, it can be dumped within a certain X-mile radius of where it was picked up in the first place. Whatever it takes to maintain the shelter's no-kill numbers is, I believe, what's being employed at this time, unfortunately. If that cat is a beloved family cat and got out by accident, its chances of ever getting back to its home and family is zero. I believe that part of the solution has got to be education. I'm not here to lay blame. I'm here to work once again with the community and the shelter with whatever it takes to manage this population and the methods being employed. West Valley City is home to a much higher percentage of uneducated constituents, legal and otherwise, based on the size of the population. And I believe this is greatly affecting the challenges to maintain no-kill numbers at this shelter. For example, at a gated condo community where I've managed two community cat colonies for over six years, over 90% of the cats in these colonies were abandoned when the residents moved away. They obviously don't know of their options when they just leave a cat behind, or a dog for that matter. They weren't born feral, but became part of the community cat world just to survive. I know without a doubt that this is not an isolated situation, but a very serious one that's an ongoing challenge to maintain no-kill numbers at the West Valley Shelter. I assure you all, this is happening throughout West Valley City, and without education, it will only become a larger issue as this population continues to increase. I firmly believe that a citywide education program needs to be implemented as well as creating a short class required for all people adopting a canine or a feline at the shelter. In closing, I understand that as of yesterday, we no longer have a community cat coordinator at the West Valley City Shelter. Though I'm not privy to the reason for the sudden absence of representation for community cats, I'd like to remind all of you at this time, as well as the three officials who have oversight of the shelter, that it is still and always will be a 100% taxpayer-funded facility. I believe that now more than ever, compassion balanced with a realistic approach to humanely managing the West Valley City community cat population is critical to the reputation of this shelter, should you choose to maintain it and keep the taxpayer-funded status active. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Julie. Were you affiliated with any group?
I am not.
Okay. You're on Red Oaks Drive?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Mike Markham.
It's Mike Markham, 3008 Allen's Way. During the study session, I kind of got a chuckle when we were talking about repainting graffiti and making everything match, which I agree that we should. The mayor made a comment about writing tracks and the mishmash of graffiti on both sides of the tracks line on the backside of the business center along there. How many of you have driven down 2700 and looked at the mishmash of fences and so forth that we have? We need to kind of start looking at that as one of our main arteries in and out of West Valley City. Kind of follow Taylorsville's lead. For some reason, or maybe I just miss it, I don't see a lot of graffiti being put on the nicer walls like you do on some of the other walls, unless Taylorsville is able to get out immediately and take care of that graffiti. But I spoke to a fellow that lives right on 27 on the east side of 27. He's got a sign on his garage called Art's Place. I went and talked to him because he knows my son, and all of those walls through there were put in at Taylorsville's expanse. Guess they, you know, if we need some money, land is at a premium in West Valley, maybe we could sell a golf course to a developer that could build more houses. We wouldn't have to pay extra money to maintain a housing development like we do the golf courses, unless the golf courses have all of a sudden became totally self-supporting. But I think if we're going to spend all this money down on, over here in Fairborn Station, we need to look at the approaches to it also. Somewhere along the line, there was a fair amount of money spent because somebody was able to put up a very nice attractive cement wall that runs from 3500 down to Market Street that separates Fairborn Station from the apartments. I don't know who paid for that, but I'll bet it wasn't the apartments. So if we could kind of look at that, address it, the whole city, instead of just the immediate Fairborn Station area, I'm adjusting to Fairborn. It's going to be nice. It's going to be pretty, but we need to make the approaches nice also. Thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here to speak in our public comment period? Seeing no one else, then I'll close that. Any comments you want to add, or Assistant City Manager Paula Hunter, thank you. Any council comments? With that then, we'll move on to our item seven on our agenda regarding the reopening of our fiscal year 2018-2019 budget, our current budget year, to consider ordinance 18-37. And what happens is, especially with this one, we have quite a few items which are rollovers, and we have an attached document where those are listed out. These are fairly straightforward and routine. They are items that have been previously approved for expenditure, but due to timing, have not been able to be utilized in that timeframe, and we just roll them forward, the extra funds that are left over, into our next year's budget, still for the same purposes. So that takes care of many of those. We also had about five grants that we received that we need to add. Grants come in. When they do, we can't always project those. And then there were a few other items where we were transferring some funds around and/or adjustments in some specialty items such as the Family Fitness Center, Pro Shop, Catering Snack Bar, things like that. Although there are some large items here, there are not, I think from our discussion, there were not any additional budgets being expended. These are all items that have been talked about or are simply moving them between one fund and another. For example, using the personnel adjustments, 1.7 million, we put those into a general category. But because of that restriction, we actually have to take action to allocate it out to the various departments based upon more current information. So it seems like a lot of items and a lot of carryforwards, some of those are very large, but they're projects that cover periods of time. And from our discussion that we had last week, I don't know that there's any specific concerns that we ought to highlight unless the council wants to highlight any of those. So with that introduction, did anyone want to highlight anything else before I go to the public? Seeing none, okay then. Officially, I will go to the public and open public comment on ordinance 18-37, reopening our budget regarding the items I've covered. By the way, these are all available to the public for anyone to look at those in detail and can ask questions on them. With that, anyone here from the public to speak on our budget? Seeing no one, I will close then. Public comment period, we'll close that. It's now closed. We're back to the council, to the council for any comments or motions.
Mayor, I would just point out, as you stated, that this is a routine matter. We always, or quarterly, we do have a budget opening to adjust our budget so that it's in line with state law and the requirements that we have determined also. These are items that have been approved before. It's just really a paperwork matter to straighten this out. And without our move for approval of ordinance 18-37.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, these are, thank goodness, mostly routine. To our city recorder then for the roll call vote.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to a public hearing on application ZT-32018, filed by the city to amend our code regarding prohibited uses in the Decker Lake Station overlay zone. In that particular area, and by the way, this will include ordinance 18-38 that will actually enact that. This proposal, you know, we've created that area where the Maverick Center, where the Harmon Theater is, or as it used to be called, the Hale Center Theater, before they moved. But there's hotels and a lot of things are happening there in that zone. It was zoned C2, and the remaining 97 acres are C2. The remaining 18 acres are manufacturing. But within that, there were some items that we thought were not compatible with the development that we were hoping to see take place there. So in addition to that overlay zone, there were several items that we will now add to the list of prohibited uses. And I'll just quickly read through those. Bus terminal, commercial raising, rental, stabling, training and grazing of animals, all that's animals, commissary, detention facility, jail, and equestrian school, heavy equipment sales and service, a new heavy truck and trailer sales, these are all prohibited, used heavy truck-trailer sales, heavy truck and trailer service, incinerator, heavy industrial, outdoor kennel, manufacture of alcoholic products, moving truck rental business. And then the non-commercial raising, training, grazing of animals, outside storage, radio and television transmission antennas, transmitting stations, stations, retail tobacco specialty business, tobacco-oriented business, towing and impound yard, truck transfer company, turf farm, equipment manufacturing, vehicle recycling facility, and vehicle storage yard. Now, seemed like there were a lot of items there that were being prohibited, but as you know, and for those of you who have been to that area, it has been developed with hotels and with restaurants, and you know, it's become quite a center, and we want to preserve that. It doesn't affect a lot of property there, but it does affect some. And some of these are kind of obvious. A towing impound yard or a recycling, vehicle recycling facility are kind of obvious, but going through there, we think all of those are appropriate to add to that list of prohibited uses. That is the introduction to that. Just to confirm, anyone on the council want to add anything to that? If not, then I will open the public input portion of the meeting on ordinance 18-38 on this Decker Lake Station overlay zone. Is there anyone here who wants to comment on this? Seeing no indication of anyone wanting to speak, I'll close the public input portion. We're back to the council and for your now comments and/or motions on ordinance 18-38. Mayor, I would move for approval of ordinance 18-38. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our resolutions. We will begin under resolutions with resolution 18-178. This is a memorandum of agreement between ourselves with Unified Fire Authority, who are the sponsors of the Utah Task Force One of the National Urban Search and Rescue Response System, and for us to be a participating agency. This is, they have 26 of these teams across the U.S., and we will now become a part of that. Up to, I think we have 10 individuals who would be trained and participate in this team. And we will participate with UFA, Salt Lake City and Park City in this particular team. And we think that's a good thing. This does not cost us money, but helps us to participate in these occasional necessary task force that come up. That is the introduction to it. To the council then.
I would move for resolution 18-178.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution 18-174. This is a modification on a federal aid agreement between our city and UDOT. This is on Bridge 6400 West, the Utah and Salt Lake Canal Bridge replacement. That was prepared, and we got into it. We ended up, a lot of federal funds go into these, and we had to do a local match of just under 7%, which amounted to about $67,000 of the total project cost. However, a number of things occurred there, and the cost came up, or came in higher, I guess I should say, due to the rapidly increasing cost of construction materials. So an additional $241,000 is needed to complete that project. But because of the timing of federal money and so forth, we couldn't go back and redo that. So we will add that in order to ensure that this project is completed. And so that is the proposal before us, $241,000 to complete the rest of the project for the 6400 West Canal Bridge replacement. To the council. Move for approval of resolution 18-179. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing, excuse me. Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 18-180. This is for the purchase of two international 10-wheel cab and chassis trucks from Rush Truck Center. These trucks will be purchased and then will ultimately be fitted with dump body and snowplow. This is replacing two 16-year-old trucks that we purchased, and they were refurbished in 2012. We'll be able to sell, or yeah, auction those off for some funds, but the amount of money that we will need to purchase these will be $219,705. That is the issue before us, replacement of a couple of our vehicles. To the council.
Mayor, I move for approval of, excuse me, resolution 18-180.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 18-181, approve the purchase of nine vehicles from Young Ford. These are Ford Interceptor sedans utilized by the patrol division of our police department. And these will replace existing vehicles. I think that's a correct statement. And I won't go into the details of the age in those, but obviously, we routinely replace vehicles, and we'll actually have a second one after this one on some other vehicles. So these are for the Ford Interceptor sedans, for a total of $231,903. We basically say not to exceed $232,000. With that then, that's the introduction to the council for that purchase. Mayor, move for approval of resolution 18-181. Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 18-182. This is to approve the purchase of 12 vehicles from Young Toyota. These will be Camry hybrid vehicles for a total not to exceed $300,000. And let's see, these will be used by the Police Department Investigation Division for our replacement of existing vehicles. That is the issue before us. And so, any further comments or motions then from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make just a quick comment.
Please do.
These vehicles we're replacing will all be put back into service somewhere in the city, either in different departments or as replacement line cars for the police department so that they can have vehicles when they need them. And so, we're not just dumping them on the auction block or anything. Five of them we are auctioning off, but the rest we will reuse in the city. So with that, I would move for approval of resolution 18-182.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, city recorder.
Councilman Vithis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. For our regularly scheduled meeting, that will conclude our business. We do have a redevelopment agency meeting immediately following this for some further business. It shouldn't take very long. But to conclude this meeting then, our regular meeting, I need a motion, and we'll complete it. Motion adjourned. All in favor to adjourn our regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. Our regular meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the meeting, the regular meeting of the Board of the Redevelopment Agency. Note that we've had an opening ceremony, that all members of the board are present except for Mrs. Lang. Note that our chief executive is absent, and Mr. Isaac is filling in for him. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes, from June 5th, July 17th, and September 18th.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the three sets of minutes. Second. Here we have a motion and a second for approving the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Any report from the executive officer?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac, will you please introduce that next resolution?
Thank you. The Redevelopment Agency of the city is requesting approval for, to amend the original contract or purchase agreement with, between the Redevelopment Agency and ICO for the Phase 2 build of the apartment complexes at Fairborn Station. The original agreement was written in 2013, and as a requirement from HUD, we need to extend the one-year date of execution to a six-year date of execution, simply because that is the timeline that is required by HUD for their financial, or for them to pull together the finances. This basically gives them evidence that, that indeed, property is in control of, essentially by ICO. Second provision, or the second amendment to this agreement is, is to ensure that the developer receive from HUD what is called a invite letter for firm application, following the submission and acceptance of the pre-application by HUD and results of a property inspection. So that's what's before the agency tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Isaac, then to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approval of Resolution 18-06.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion regarding this motion? All right, to our secretary then for the vote.
Mr. Fiti Samanu.
Aye.
Mr. Buhler.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
And Chairman Norfeld.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Did you cover 18-07?
I just would add that the next resolution is for the disposition of land in accordance with the development. This particular agreement sets forth the, all of the terms of the development with ICO, including the sale of the property for $1.5 million, so the, so basically the RDA is going to receive from ICO that amount of money, and in return, the Phase 2 also sets forth, I mean, this particular resolution also sets forth the criteria that's what's going to be built, 201 rental units, 295 parking stalls, and other improvements in that area.
Thank you. Okay, to the board. Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 18-07. Second. Thank you. Any more discussion on this resolution? All right, go to the secretary for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Buhler.
Aye.
Mr. Fiti Samanu.
Aye.
And Chairman Norfeld.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes all the items on our agenda, so one more motion, please. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.